Let's go ahead and get started while Kim's coming. Do you want to stand, please?
Please.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as we gather in this meeting tonight, I pray that you would lead, guide, and direct us in all decisions and all of our ideas and all of our situations that we're in here in the school system, God, I pray that you'd ever be with us, that your guiding hand would be upon us. I pray that you'd be with the faculty and staff, pray that you'd be with our students. I pray that we would see our students of the utmost importance as the future of our community. Lord, that we look back and we realize that we were there one day. We were a student here in this system. And Lord, that we're so thankful for our community. We're so thankful for the leadership that it has. And Lord, we're so thankful that we have the ability to be collectively aboard, God, and we hope that we honor you. Lord, we ask you once again to go with us. We love you because you did first love us. And we ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. Let's call the meeting to order. Mr. Sale, do we have anything to add to the agenda?
I don't believe there are any corrections or additions to the agenda, Mr. McKinney, tonight.
All right. Do we have an approval for it? Somebody, okay.
Set.
Everybody in favor? All right. I hear Ms. Carpenter. All right, Mr. Sale, if you would, let's take over the discussion items.
In September, every year at our first board meeting after the start of the new year, we ask our new teachers to come and to introduce themselves so that you might see their face. I remember expressly last month, I believe you said, "I only know two names on this list." And that's because that's where we are in hiring educators today, which doesn't mean that they're any less qualified. It just means they may not have grown up in Bryson City, that's all. And so I have asked Ms. Turbifield if she will please come and help us introduce our beginning teachers for this year.
Good evening. So I think I probably have one of the best jobs in the system is to be able to work with our brand-new teachers, whether they're just new to our system or our beginning teachers. And so we've gotten some of them here, most of them here. There was a lot of them this year. You guys know, you approved them. But I'm just going to let them come up and stand in front of the microphone and tell their name and what they teach. So come on up, new people. This is one of my school babies. That makes me really old.
I'm Alaina Booth, and I'm a seventh-grade science teacher at the middle school.
Hey, I'm Carolyn Easterly, and I'm the teaching and learning coach at East Elementary.
Hey, I'm Lizzie Carver, and I teach eighth grade social studies. It's amazing.
Hi there. Debbie Clor, seventh grade world history at the middle school, and thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Taylor, and I teach eighth grade ELA.
Hello, I'm Carrie Kirkland. I teach third grade at East Elementary.
Hi, I'm Charlene Ward. I teach three-five EC at East Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Messier. I teach fifth grade at East Elementary. So happy to be here.
Hey, I'm Kenesha Garrison. I teach fifth grade at East Elementary. And what a blessing it has been so far. So thank you.
Hello, I'm Cassie Phillips, and I teach second grade at East.
I'm Jordan Rains, and I teach first grade at East.
I think that's all that we've got here. Oh, come on up, Juliana.
Hi, my name is Juliana Bosman, and I am the ESL teacher. Nice to meet you.
Explain, Ms. Turbifield, explain what ESL is for those of us who might not know.
So for our multilingual children, she is the go-between. And she assesses them to make sure what we need to give them in the classroom, and she helps support them in the classroom. So we're glad to have her on board with us.
Some of you may remember Sue Ellen Pigman. Sue Ellen did that for a number of years. And this is our new model. Sue Ellen decided to retire, and so maybe we upgraded. I think so.
She always exists.
Always.
Smile.
Always.
So that, I think that's most of them. There were some that were coaching this evening and some that, we had one that was sick, let me know they were sick. So, but we appreciate you supporting them and happy to have them.
So to all of you, thank you, and I hope that your first two or three weeks have been a blessing to you. We are extremely, extremely excited to have you here. And these folks are here to help and support you. So thank you for joining our team.
Thank you.
I told them they could leave, they're hired.
I would imagine that they are. The first few weeks, maybe months, of a new teacher's life is like drinking from a fire hose. They're handling it well. We have Amaya Hicks tonight. She sent an email and asked if she could come and speak to us about track rings, I believe. And so, Amaya, the podium, the microphone is yours. And it looks like you might have brought your cheering section with you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amaya Hicks. I'm a senior at Swain County High School. I am a captain of the cross-country, basketball, indoor, and outdoor track and field teams. Thank you for the opportunity of letting me speak tonight. I would like to start off by saying I'm here on my own conviction and have not been persuaded by anyone. Thank you all for helping resurface the track. It was much needed and greatly appreciated. I would like to briefly talk about our successes in the running programs. In June of 2021, our team successfully competed to win the women's 1A track and field state championship. This win was followed by another state title in November 2021, as we brought home the women's 1A cross-country state title. In February 2022, we competed not only against 1A, but against 2A and won the indoor track and field state championship, making Swain County the first-ever 1A school to win the indoor state championship in the 1A and 2A division. In May of 2022, we won the women's 1A outdoor track and field state championship. In addition to overall team championships, the following individuals also won state championships. Monica Riordan, 100-meter hurdles; Jessica Lowman, 300-meter hurdles; Arizona Blankenship, cross-country; Matthew Gray, pole vault; Amelia Rogers, pole vault; and the four-by-eight relay team with Arizona Blankenship, Gracie Montith, Maisy Helpman, Lily Jerkness, and myself. For those of you who don't know, a triple crown is when you have consecutively won the cross-country, indoor, and outdoor state titles, which has never been accomplished by a 1A school until us. In addition to accomplishing the triple crown, we currently hold a four-peat and are projected to make it a five-peat in November. My understanding is that we have a remaining balance of $5,000 for our indoor track and field rings. The rings for spring 2022 outdoor track and field have not been ordered yet due to lack of funding. There are 47 individuals receiving rings at a cost of $250 per ring. That totals to $11,750 just for the outdoor rings alone. In total, we need $16,750 to purchase the rings. And that price does not include the banners for the gym or any apparel. It is to my knowledge that other schools within our conference set aside funding by their school boards to purchase rings for their state championship athletes. The state champions from Murphy and Robbinsville have already received their rings for the 2022 outdoor track and field season. We, however, are waiting to receive our rings for the indoor and outdoor ring, or season of 2022. The indoor rings were ordered and received, yet we have not received them as a team. Numerous unsuccessful attempts have been made by our team to fundraise. I do not feel that the fundraising structure that is in place is fair to all sports teams. For example, we've been told not to ask certain businesses for donations because if they contribute money to our rings, they won't contribute money to the football program. Also, we have asked to have the opportunity to sell 50-50 tickets at home football games and have been unsuccessful. In no way am I coming after any individual program or coach. I just think that the systems that are set in place need to be fixed and are broken. I strongly believe that as athletes who represent Swain County schools and are successful at the state level, we should not have to fully fund our state rings. When we were here a few months ago, we were told this is a good problem to have, but we have not resolved the problem. I believe there needs to be a structured funding appropriated fairly for individual and team state championships. We have made sacrifices as a team to try and assist with cost savings. For example, when we traveled to our 2021 cross-country state championships, we took a short bus instead of a charter bus in order to save money to go towards our rings, where everyone was jam-packed, two and three to a seat. With all that being said, after word got out that I was going to be here today, it has been brought to my attention that there has been some movement in some of the areas I have already mentioned. That's exactly what I hoped would happen by me coming here today, but there is still a lot of work to be done. We need to work harder to become proactive instead of reactive. I'm asking for your help in preparing accordingly so that when Swain County athletes are successful at the state level, they are rewarded in a timely manner. As a senior and as I reflect my time as a Swain student, or as a student at Swain, I'm filled with mixed emotions. As a captain, I'm obligated to my teammates and to future athletes to help improve the recognition of success. I know we can do better when it comes to equal treatment of all sports teams. I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I humbly ask that you take the time and action to continue to make Swain County schools our best in the summer. I'm not.
Do you have any specific questions that you would like to ask the board this evening? And if you don't, that's okay.
What do you guys think about, I mean, I think we do need to have some kind of account or some kind of funding that is appropriated to state championships because as you tell, as you can tell, it's a huge problem. So I guess your ideas on that.
Do you have any questions that you would like to ask Amaya, or is there anything that any of you would like to say? And I shouldn't be doing this. You're in charge. I apologize.
No, that's the problem. I'm just impressed that we have a student coming forward to present something. That includes citizenship, and that's good team leadership. And I guess I would say, first of all, we've never had this problem before because we've not had this many championships at one time. That's great. So it is a new problem. It's a great problem. And so, give us, and I know, Mr. Sale, at the look time and see what we can come up with because you're going to win some more. So we're going to have to have something in place. And that is so good. I mean, I would like for all those members to stand. It just blows me away how many of you got involved in this. Let's give them applause for what you've done.
Also, our boys' team has a really great shot of winning this year. So there's that.
I wouldn't slight the girls' team yet.
Well, and us, of course.
I've been watching your numbers, and it looks really good.
I want to say we appreciate it down the week. It's not every day we get to hear students stand up and, you know, tell the facts pretty much. And, you know, most time we hear from the staff, and it's just good to hear from the students, and that grows, that shows great leadership on your part.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So I would suggest that you give me an opportunity to sit and to talk to Amaya and some of her team and see if we can come up with a solution. There are some pieces that are in place, including a fundraising potential possibility right now that seems to have some real promise. It has an 80% return rate, which is higher than most fundraising, and it's legal. So let, give us a chance, and I'll report back to you. And, Amaya, we will have this problem solved somehow if we have to take it out of Mr. McKinney's salary. Will we have any delays this year before we can have some getting admission? Hopefully, indoor track will have some.
Yeah, for cross-country, since we run it.
Will they want to charge admission like when we went to Cherokee? You can charge admission. It's difficult sometimes whenever you're doing, having a track meet to regulate all of that because it's kind of wide open and it's not always gated. And like we've said, even with our renovations at the track that we have now, it really is not regulation size or wide enough for, probably for high school varsity level. We're still thinking about middle school. Keith, are we, are we still looking at perhaps using WCU for some home meets?
We can, our indoor track, we could host them on our track because it's different distances and the tracks different in a way. It's not as big as outdoor. So I've asked the conference to let me host every one if we can get.
Okay. So that's for indoor, which would be during winter season?
Outdoors, it's going to be a little wonky, but I think we can get like two or three teams in number of vehicles. But I'm looking at Western. Western will charge us $500 if you use that facility. Across country, you could do it. The EBCI allows you to use that, but we cannot charge funds and have concessions and anything that could do.
Okay. So did that answer your question? I think there are possibilities.
And you did say maybe 50-50 at the football games, parking, some of that.
Yeah, that's been changed as of today. So.
Good. That's because of your advocacy. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, I, I think we just need to sit down and look and see what we can do. Because, now I know I've been personally given to.
Yes.
And I was amazed how many times I've done that. I mean, I can keep up with it, and that's great. So we're proud of what you're doing. We need, we need to take care of that issue.
Thank you.
Amaya, I'll get with you this week, and we'll set up a time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here tonight. You know, kind of along those lines, there's a policy that I have given for you to review, if I can find my copy. It's policy 8220, and it has to do with gifts, and I believe the word is bequest. I'm not sure. I've never seen it except in this policy. And it has to do with the structure that we have been using for donations, basically. Every donation in the past that has come to the schools was supposed to come across my desk, even if it were, you know, 50 cents or a food item. And I think that that is a bit restrictive and time-consuming. And so I'm asking that you consider a couple of things. And I've given you a copy of this, and the changes are listed in red. I'm asking that you give me, in this, this policy, the authority to develop a process to determine and document whether a donation is suitable for a school or a school system. And right now, we are using a donation form. I would like to refine that some and make sure that it is not overtaxing, but at the same time, we can maintain accountability. And really, that's to protect the people who receive the donation so that they aren't accused of misusing or mishandling any donation that comes in. That's all. And the other thing, and this is really the, the more major of the two, is to allow the principal of the school to accept donations up to $1,500. In the current policy, that's not allowed. There are two counties in North, not in North Carolina, but in western North Carolina that still use that approach. One is Cherokee County, and the other is Jackson County. That's still in their board policy. However, all of the other counties such as Clay, let me see, Graham, Haywood, they allow principals to accept donations up to certain limits and make sure that the superintendent knows that. I'm asking that you consider allowing us to put a $1,500 threshold on donations received to the school by the principal, and then whoever that principal is, would let me know. Past $1,500, I would have to approve it, and past $25,000, as our policy says now, you would have to approve that. Now, we'll tell you that, that max for superintendent approval also varies from county to county. I think the highest that I've seen is $30,000. The lowest that I've seen is $5,000. There's one county where the board approves every single donation that comes through. I question if that really happens. But that's not, that's not my concern. What I am asking is for you to consider the adjustments to this policy as we look at some of the other issues that we're dealing with right now as far as fundraising and parent organizations and things like that. Okay? Do you have any questions about that? I'm not asking for a vote tonight, just for you to consider it.
And that's a one entity, not a lump sum, right? So not if you had three people given...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But if you had somebody donating t-shirts or something like that, then they'd just go through the principal?
Go through the principal, you know. And I think that Travis, under this, and we may need to specify a little bit more, or at least maybe have a procedure in place. Because a policy and a procedure is a little bit different. The procedure allows for us to regulate how it's going to happen. But if we were to look at the sum value of those t-shirts, and it was less than $1,500, then, then all I need to do is just denote. That's all.
No form or anything like that?
I think that there needs to be a form. I think there needs to be a tracking system. And, and that's why that first line is in there. I believe that we need to look at that. And I need to work with principals and Stephanie and see what a good procedure would be for that. And it may be what we have, but I would, I just want some time to look at that and improve it if we can. Any other questions?
Sounds like a good start, anyway.
Yep. I'll, if you want for me to, I can, I can come back to you with the process for next time. And that way, before you approve or don't approve or revise this policy in the October meeting, you can see what we're looking at. Is that, is that acceptable to you?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Very good. I want to start something a little different this month, and what that is, is to give you a monthly report of some, of things that have happened in the school system that I believe that you need to know about. Did we bring the paper copies? Do they have those? You should have a paper copy with the big blue chart on the front. Okay? The first thing I want for you to note is there is a website at the top of this. There are some state-level graphs that I took out of this, this, it really is a book, but it's, it's a presentation from bestnc.org. And if you want to go there and to look at other demographic and data pieces from across the state concerning education, it is a very, it is a packed document, but it's not real thick to read. As we were looking at our enrollment across the school system this year, we had some concerns as we were starting out. We were afraid that our numbers were going to decline, maybe even to the 1750 level. And as we have come through the first 10 days, we've noted that, including our pre-K, we have 1,850 students who are enrolled. Now, that doesn't mean that they're all in school every day because sickness has already started to impact that. But you can see the numbers at each of the schools there, and you, I think you, you might want to note that the high school has a large number because there's a group of students that are moving through that have impacted the middle school and now are impacting the high school as well. They have, right now, an enrollment of somewhere around 571. The graph underneath that, though, shows that over the past several years, there has been a declining enrollment. And that is holding true in other places as well. We are seeing some rebound this year. And I want you to note at the bottom that, that, that change across the state is being attributed to an increase in the number of students that are going to homeschool and to charter schools. Over the last 10 years, homeschool enrollment has gone up 115%. It's more than doubled. And charter schools has gone up over 200%. And a lot of us have been saying that that is going to impact us. And while that is impacting us some in Swain County, what may be impacting us more than that is students who are going to neighboring districts. And if you'll look on the second page, you'll see some exit data. These graphs represent the number of students that have left our school system in the past three years and gone different places. Most of the students that leave us, that transfer out, end up in another public school in North Carolina. Most of them. But you'll notice that there are some at the top that are going to private school. You will see that there are some going to out-of-state, and then you can see that there, there are various numbers that are going to districts that are around us and to homeschool. The 312 category is the Cherokee Extension School, and there has been an exodus from the Cherokee Extension School, which the funding flows through us, too. Does that make sense? Okay? They are, they are sort of part of Swain County's school system as far as funding is concerned, but they go to the reservation schools. However, what we're noticing is that's slowing down. The, the students that are leaving the Extension School, the number is slowing down or diminishing. Okay? And you can see across the state there on that bottom graph, that across the state of North Carolina, the various number of students that are in the different school entities. I bring all of that to you because Mr. McKinney and I had a conversation not long ago about what are our enrollment numbers, and then he asked me, "Where are they going?" And with these graphs, we can see that they are going some to homeschools and to private schools and to charter schools, but largely, they're transferring to districts that are close to us or staying within North Carolina public schools. Okay? Right. Do you have any questions about that? And just because we have students that are exiting the school system and transferring, that doesn't mean that we don't have students transferring in to replace them as well. Okay? So when you look at those, that graph at the top of that page, don't let it become too concerning to you. It just shows us where our kids are going. Okay? Any questions? All right. Now, one of the things that came to us in, in the last 10 days is, is the accountability structure and the numbers of, that our, that our students have scored based on the summative exams or the EOGs and the EOC. For the first time, as I can, I can remember, we have a couple of schools that have not finished their, their year exactly where any of us would have liked them to. But at the same time, I don't want us to become too overreactive on that because that's true across the state. As we look at other districts around us, there, there are an equal percentage of, of schools that have not received the report card grade that they have been accustomed to in the past. We have two schools that are Cs, and we have two schools that are Ds. And the reason that those schools are Ds can be varied in, in all kinds of different directions. And I have to say this, that I really believe that the system that they are scoring our schools with, according to legislated mandate, is an unfair system because it puts 80% of the weight on a single test or a group of tests at the end of the year, and it doesn't include any measure of how far the students have come from the beginning of the year. And we call that growth. Okay? One of our schools that is a D, East Elementary, had 80% of their students overall show a year's growth, and yet they ended up with a D on their report card. That makes absolute zero sense to me and seems to be unfair. Nevertheless, because the East and the middle school have been placed into this improvement model, there are some requirements that those schools and our district have to fulfill. And that's what the timeline is in the middle of that page. There are a couple of pieces that you must be involved in. On November the 4th, we will be sending to you or bringing to you both East and the middle schools, the school improvement plans. We've called those the NC Star plans for the past three or four years. We've called those the NC Star Plans for the past three or four years. Those are to be reviewed by you and for you to develop questions on. And then on November the eighteenth, I'll have Amanda and Tim here to explain those plans to you and to answer your questions. At that point, we would ask that you vote on those plans or send them back for more work. That is mandated, um, by the school improvement model that we have been given by the state, okay? After that, the rest of the work falls to us as a district and those schools in particular. Uh, one of the things that will be required by these two schools is, is something called the super observation, which is basically an evaluation of the teachers that is very similar to what they have had in the past, but there are some additional pieces added to it. Um, and it gives the principals an opportunity to drill down and to see which teachers, um, have a different set of needs and perhaps how can we meet those and help them grow as well, okay? Those are the pieces that are going to come into effect for us because of the school improvement process. Now, at the bottom of the page, there's a graph that I put in here intentionally, and it reflects the fact that what we could call poverty or socioeconomic status has a tremendous impact on those summative scores. And you'll notice at the bottom that the more affluent a school is, that means those schools with less free and reduced service traditionally score higher on summatives. And that's reflected in what we have seen in the past as well. Our school system has been a solid C school system for years and years and years. Because I believe of the COVID effect, we are having to rebound some. And I believe with all of my heart that this staff in Swain County is going to make that happen. But we're not going to panic about it, and we are going to focus on the growth of every single student, not just on the score that happens at the end of the year. To me, that's a more valuable tool. Let's remember where we've come from rather than just where we end up. And I've said a lot, and I know that, but this is a major issue that we are working through in our school system that we haven't had to do before, okay? Do you have questions or thoughts?
Do we have any statistics on, uh, our attendance rates compared to the other districts?
I do not at this point.
They don't even grade that, do they?
Is attendance included, attendance, is attendance included in the report card? I don't recall that.
Would you share the UCS that they, that have our, had our eighteen, nineteen?
Mm-hmm.
Attendance thirty minutes?
Mm-hmm.
And we, we are, we have more chronic absences out there than our surrounding counties. We, we were up towards one of the most chronic absence, uh, counties in the state. You had it on a color code and colored line manns or turks that.
But I can get a copy of that. What, what Brandon is saying is a, a chronic attendance, um, issue is someone who misses eighteen days or more. They miss ten, ten percent of their year. In our school, in our district, it'd be seventeen days, um, because we have about a hundred and seventy-five days in there. And Swain County right now has been showing a higher level of chronic absenteeism than the districts that are around us. That would answer your question probably. Other questions or thoughts? Well, if you, go ahead.
I noticed somewhere, I can't, I don't see here, the high school did very well on them. Some measurements there, didn't they? They did well.
And in the information that I gave you, there are about two pages about high school data. Um, the graduation rate, um, is eighty-six point five.
Right.
Um, I think, and la- last year, or the year before last, it was eighty-seven, no, last year it was eighty-seven point eight, so it's comparable. But I think it's important to reach all the way back to two thousand eighteen, nineteen, which was before COVID, and that year before COVID really hit, it was in the upper to mid seventies. So there has been tremendous work at the high school to improve that and to encourage students to, to stay. I think they should be commended on that. Also, there are, um, numbers that compare their EOC scores per subgroup to the state. And if you'll look at the chart at the bottom of that page, it has the green and the yellow. Green means it's above the state, and yellow means it's within ten percent. I think those are significant scores, and again, they need to be commended for the work that they've done to achieve that.
And there, there's concerns across the state with the methodology and coming up with those, right?
Yes, there is, even to the state superintendent. Um, she's made some, some strong statements about the fact that she believes that the process, the formula that is used to grade schools is weighted incorrectly between proficiency and growth. I don't, she has not given numbers, um, concerning how she, I mean, reflecting how she thinks it should be, but I bet that she would come close to a fifty-fifty split anyhow. And that's what most people are saying right now, Ken, at least make them even.
So we're not, we're not alone in these concerns?
We are not, and and if I haven't emphasized that enough, I, I try, I tried to at the very beginning. Um, the number of DNF schools has doubled, have doubled this year across the state. Anything else, anyone? If you have any questions or thoughts or concerns about that, please share them with me, and I would be, would be pleased to try and get that, that information to you. You know, um, last year at the end of the year, we tried to, to walk through some schools, and our dates didn't work very well. I think that we need to do that. I think that we need to spend some time walking through our buildings. You need to see what's going on, in my opinion. Um, and so if you would share with me some, uh, some dates that you might have available, uh, or at least days of the week that are best for you, and then we can put some times, some days out and see if you all can't, uh, walk together through some of our schools, okay? So if you would share that to me, with me, either before you leave or by email, I'd appreciate that, and we'll get some scheduled.
Okay.
And we don't have to do them all in one day.
No. It'd be best if you don't.
I'm flexible. But we can spread them out however you want.
Uh, Mr. McKinney, that's all of the discussion that I have. Thank you for your, your, your patience as we were going through that superintendent report.
All right, uh, we're public comment time here, I think, and, uh, do we have anybody signed up? Oh, one person. Mr. Roden, if you would stand up, please, and come to that microphone. Now, let me remind you, you have three minutes, and, uh, we, we don't talk about personnel or student issues if, if with names. If you have any issues like that, then you need to talk to the superintendent. Other than that, uh, we welcome your comments.
I appreciate the time to speak, but it's not about personnel or money or nothing like that. It's a short, simple thing. I have spoken to Mark Friday night at the ballgame, but it's about handicap parking at the ballgame, football games for handicapped. I have pictures of people parking there, and it's come to my attention, those spots are being sold at five dollars a piece, first come, first served. That money has been going to Neil Blankenship. I want to know, and I want it in writing from the school sometime, when you can get it within the next week. Do they have the proper tax papers to be selling these spots? Where's that money going? What's it being used for? The reason because of that? We have a lot of handicap people in this county. I look healthy. You don't know me, Mitch, Travis Summit, no. I can't walk half a mile up to the school. I've got COPD, just had a heart attack, only got forty-six percent of my heart function left. More, other multiple problems. There was people this past Friday night and the one before. They had to run and go home because they had nowhere to park, and they're handicapped with placards hanging in their car. Rescue squad turns around, sends them down the road. We don't have nowhere to park. I said, why? Because they're selling the spots for five dollars a piece, first come, first served. I think we need to take care of our residents of the county that worked for this county or live in the county and pay taxes. They supported these groups, our schools, our football, our basketball, and all these track kids that was here. We ought to have something for the disabled where they can get up there and park. And the athletic director and some of the previous coaches parking on the first row and walking from here to the wall inside the gate. If they're coaching or able to coach, they're able to walk from somewhere else, park them somewhere else. Leave that for the handicapped. I mean, hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a night that they're going to take in on Friday night for five dollars a piece, which is more important? That hundred and fifty dollars or the residents of our county that wants to support the people in the football playing? Because when they go through that gate, they pay to get in, they eat at concessions. They're going, you're going to make a lot more money than a hundred and fifty dollars, but turning them away and them going home, you're not making nothing. And that's not good for our senior citizens, I'll put it. I'm not that old, sixty-two, but I'm knocking on the door, you know? I worked a lot of years for this county. And for what? Nothing. We didn't have retirement, we ain't got nothing. And now I'm broke down because of it, lifting them stretchers for twenty years. We didn't have the hydraulic stretchers EMS got now. We used our back and our legs. But that's the only thing I wanted to talk about. And if you can do something, and Mark says they have tried to do something, but ten or fifteen spaces out of fifty up there is not cutting it. When you have to park all the way around to the back, nearly to the trash can, when you've got all this other parking right there where they can just walk right straight across and get their ticket and go in, it makes it a lot easier, especially the ones that's on oxygen.
How many spaces you think is needed for something like that?
How many spaces? Friday night, I walked around and looked, going back to my truck, because I had to park all the way around behind the building there. I seen five vehicles with handicapped placards. The ones parking in the handicap spots right there in the front, I didn't see a handicap tag or a handicap placard. They're parking where they want to park, when they want to park there, where they're a coach or whatever. And Coach Holt's dad was denied a parking place. He's handicapped, he couldn't even find a place to park Friday night. Neil Blankenship told him, said, no, he can't park there. He wants to park there, he'll pay eight hundred dollars like everybody else in the slots behind the visitors' home team in the parking lot. So, there you go. It's all about money for some, well, it's all about money, period. I'll put it straight like that. Handicapped, don't matter if it's his dad, me, whoever, we need a place to park that we want to go to the ballgame. We don't have to walk from down at Victor Babiss Church to get up there. I think it ought, ought to have at least half of that area designated for handicap. Then go from there and see what it does.
Thank you, Larry.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we need to go into closed session for a couple of items that are related to personnel, if you would.
I'm with the Swain County Board of Education to go into closed session with the Department discussing information that is previously confidential, not of public record, under the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three one eight point one one A one.
Second.
All right, I'll do the favor.
Mr. McGinnity, that brings us to our action items. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Matthew Smith as CTE teacher at Swain High School effective September 22nd, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Billy C. King, that's Caleb King, the C stands for Caleb, okay, as bus driver effective September 8th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Sandra Rowe as teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary effective September 23rd, 2022.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Adam Dills as custodian at Swain High School effective August 15th, 2022. effective August 15th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jamie Bradshaw as general maintenance worker effective August 22nd, 2022.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Vicki Bailey as after-school dance instructor effective August 15th, 2022.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Laurie Sutton as after-school assistant dance instructor effective August 15th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Blake Godfrey as teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary effective September 6th, 2022.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Charlene Ward as EC teacher at Swain East Elementary effective September 6th, 2022.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
That was Charlene Ward, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ John Tabor as part-time custodian at Swain High School effective September 12th, 2022.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Kelly Holland as payroll coordinator at the central office, and the start date is to be determined yet. She has to work a notice of some sort.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Hannah Brown as varsity girls assistant basketball coach.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Stephen Jamison as middle school girls head basketball coach.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Alan Melvin as middle school shooting team head coach.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Philip Henson as middle school shooting team assistant coach.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ David Zalva as varsity shooting team head coach.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Toby Soral as varsity shooting team assistant coach.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jay Rackster as high school assistant track coach.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
There is an extensive list of after-school employees. There's probably thirty or thirty-five, maybe forty people on there. I would be pleased to read all those names. If you want me to, I would be more pleased not to have to. Do you have any desire for me to read all those names?
No, we shall.
No, thank you.
There'll be public record if anybody has any questions after the vote, okay? All of those on that list, to my knowledge, are already employed by the school system in a different position. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the attached lists of after-school applicants.
Motion. Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve Linda Gunter as a Level Two volunteer. For your memory, a Level Two volunteer is someone who is volunteering consistently, regularly, almost as on schedule, will be alone, has the potential to be alone with students, and has passed a background check, okay? A Level One volunteer is somebody that just comes in irregularly. These are Level Twos, okay?
Motion.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve Tanner Lawson as a Level Two volunteer.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the August 8th, 2022 open and closed session minutes.
Motion. Second.
All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
You will see that there are several events that are coming up, including PLC letter days. Those are going to be very important for us as we're moving forward with the data that we have in hand. Pre-K Community Helper Day is coming up. Tricia, you still here? It'll be in the month of September, okay? So just pick a day and show up. Our next meeting is October the 10th. There are some transfers that have been made in the school system. There are lots of trips going on, and I would especially call your attention to the last one on the list, which is the high school FFA. They'll be traveling to Indianapolis, Indiana for the National FFA Convention. The reason I draw your attention to that, that's out of state, okay? And I want you to see that. Also, we have some EBCI students that'll be going to ETSU, but I don't really consider that out of state. It's so close, okay? And ladies and gentlemen, to my knowledge, that's all we've got on the agenda unless I've missed something.
October 10th is a holiday, as long as it's fine with everybody.
Is it a holiday?
It's his Columbus Day.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong.
No, you're probably right. Do you want to move that to the 17th?
I don't. It didn't bother me at all. I just wanted to make sure everybody's okay.
I won't be here the 17th.
October.
Yeah.
You want to be here the 17th? You want to be here the 17th?
Can't say you want to do it the 10th?
Okay, it's up to y'all.
All right, it's fine. I just, sorry, I better make a check.
Okay, so October the 10th it is. That's all that's on the agenda. I believe that there is an opportunity for another closed session conversation, and there will be no action after that. So if you want to go to closed section for that, then we can dismiss from there.
All right. You make that motion, and then we'll adjourn, and go to closed session.
I'm with the Swain County Board of Education going to closed session for purposes discussing information of the previous confidence from not part of public record in North Carolina statute 143, 318, 1181.
Second.
All right. All in favor by a show of hands, and we're adjourned, and we will go to closed session.